Demonstrators stand united.
Notice the discrimination against people all throughout the world. This has to stop, and we have to drive this regime from power now.
Picketers denouncing President Trump and his planned temporary ban on refugees, also people from seven mostly Muslim nations from entering the United States. Iran, Iraq, and Syria included. As of deadline time for this story, Trump's travel ban had been blocked by the courts, but appeared headed to the U.S. Supreme Court for a resolution. The president says he's just trying to protect Americans from Islamic terrorists.
And if you remember, ISIS said, "We are going to infiltrate the United States and other countries through the migration." And then we're not allowed to be tough on the people coming in? Explain that one.
Demonstrator DJ Yun tries.
I'm a son of immigrant, and I'm a son of refugee. I believe all American, we are children of refugees and children of immigrants. This is what this country stands for. I think this is time we've got to show our love, solidarity with Muslim community, refugees, and immigrants.
I am here as a human being. I'm also here because I'm a Christian, and I believe that this is something that human beings and Christians cannot stand for, that we need to stand up with our brothers and sisters who are being oppressed by these executive orders.
Please don't hate, please don't fear. Go and meet the person that you're afraid of meeting. If they look different than you, they act differently, they worship differently, they have a different skin color than you. Go, meet them. It is easy to hate. Is it easy to stay home and hate and be like, "We're different"? Go there, meet them. You will just find out that they're everyday Americans just like you and me.
L.A. City Councilman Paul Krikorian takes a stand against the president's plan to create a Muslim registry so Muslims can be tracked. The councilman authoring a motion that would prohibit the city from creating any registry based on religion. The entire city family appears to back him and is asking for help.
And so call the city of Los Angeles, call your council member, call the mayor's office, and ask how you can be a part of this movement to make sure that everyone is protected, everyone's rights are protected, and that we can continue to be a great nation.
Outside Koreatown's Islamic center, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Councilman Krikorian's measure would also call on the LAPD to report on efforts to reduce hate crimes against L.A. Muslims. Well, turning now to another controversial issue, immigration. A series of raids and sweeps by immigration authorities leaves L.A.'s immigrant community in chaos, but attorneys and advocates are teaching immigrants to fight back. Anna Marcos has the latest.
These are no ordinary raids, according to immigrant advocates. They say the latest sweeps by immigration authorities and the new administration are something entirely new, more hard-edged, more relentless, targeting Angelino families, criminals and non-criminals alike. And the raids are filling residents with a new kind of terror.
My father was being deported, and he got captured. My dad was took, he got taken away from me. No.
Marlene Mosqueta breaks down remembering how her dad, who has no criminal record, was carted away by Immigration and Customs Enforcement agents, but she wasn't the only one.
Yesterday, I saw a case, this little girl crying for her dad. You know how that impact me? That impact me so bad.
Officials at Immigration and Customs Enforcement declined an interview, but said in a statement, "These enforcement actions are not unique," and that in the L.A. area, out of 161 individuals arrested, 151 had prior criminal convictions. Lawyers and immigration advocates at CHIRLA, the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights of Los Angeles, have gone into overdrive in the wake of the raids, holding workshops to teach immigrants their rights. Detainees in the raids say they were denied access to lawyers, and CHIRLA attorneys themselves often couldn't get to clients, but they say even immigrants are allowed due process.
People called us. Attorneys called us that this was happening, that this was abnormal.
It was about transparency, it was about access to legal counsel.
Yeah, we do have an immigration law, but we also have to inject humanity and compassion into the law, and we're destroying families.
Advocates say you are required to give your name if confronted by law enforcement officials, but that there are definitely things you shouldn't do. Don't run, don't sign anything, and better yet, don't open the door. If the worst does happen, have legal referrals and information ready to give to your family and friends so you can get help.
It should go without saying that America is and always has been a nation of immigrants.
We need to be together. This is what the United States stands for, and we're all breaking it apart.
Advocates say the push by the new administration to deport illegal immigrants promises to get worse, and they want to prepare immigrants to push back. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
By the way, the attorneys at CHIRLA were able to get Marlene Mosqueta's dad back before he was deported. If you want more information, visit chirla.org. Well, switching gears now as Metro works to put the brakes on violators who sexually harass transit riders with a new hotline. Anna Marcos has more on the pilot program.
Taking Metro is supposed to provide a smooth, hassle-free commute, but for some riders, it's been a bumpy ride. A 2014 Metro study showed 22% of transit riders claim to have been sexually harassed or assaulted while taking metro trains and buses.
This behavior is not tolerated, and it's not excusable, and not okay. Any form of sexual harassment, which can be any unwanted sexual behavior, from cat calling, to any sort of gestures, to touching, to anything basically that the person is not wanting of sexual behavior.
And now Metro has teamed up with Peace Over Violence, a nonprofit, to run a 24-hour hotline. Under the one-year pilot program, transit riders can use the hotline to report sexual abuse and harassment.
Our counselors are there to listen, to provide options and information about what steps they can take.
Basically, the information is received, it can be turned over to the law enforcement authorities to track and maybe investigate. I mean, we do have closed circuit cameras on a number of our systems, so we can look to see what we have there and then identify.
Since the study came out, Metro has introduced an anti-harassment campaign called "It's Off Limits," posting flyers to educate the public, and the number of reported assaults dropped last year to 18%. Now it's down to 15%. Transit officials hope the hotline keeps bringing those numbers down.
We've made some progress in driving that number down. Zero is the only acceptable number, so we still know that there's more to do.
Metro officials also say cellphone service is now available on the red and purple metro lines, just another way to make reporting easier and let the violators know that their behavior is definitely off limits. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Officials say Metro is the first transit agency to have a 24-hour sexual abuse hotline. Well, it's been another record-breaker for tourism in L.A., helping boost the local economy. Rasha Goel has more on the soaring numbers in travel and cargo shipments.
For the sixth year in a row, Los Angeles has set a record in tourism, with 2016's surge coming both from domestic and international visitors. Officials attributed the growth partly to investments made in the past few years on several newer attractions, including the new wizarding world of Harry Potter that opened last year at Universal Studios Hollywood.
The technology is very different, the experience is very different than what they have in Florida. All of that, and as we talk about this Harry Potter experience around the world, people can't wait to get here.
According to officials, 47.3 million visitors came to Los Angeles in 2016. That's an increase of nearly 4% over 2015. Officials are hoping to have 50 million visitors by 2020. With the influx of travelers into L.A., they say that number is achievable.
80.9 million passengers used the airport last year. That's a 9% growth level over 2015.
And that growth was also seen at the Port of Los Angeles, where more cargo was moved in 2016 than ever in its 100-year history. 8.8 million cargo containers were shipped through the port. Officials say a combination of higher tourism and increased port traffic has helped create more than 140,000 jobs and about 150,000 new businesses since 2013.
Those of us that make our living in tourism, over 500,000 families feed their children, pay their rent, and supply education to their children through tourism.
People are coming to Los Angeles because they believe in our future. It's a world destination, both for business and for tourism, and it really is an indication, I think, of the incredibly bright future that this city has ahead of it.
With warm weather and new tourist attractions, visitors can unlock the door to this magical city. From Universal Studios, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Officials say the LAX modernization will also help attract and make it easier for people to come to the city. Well, young people can impact change and stop violence in their schools. That's the message of the Sandy Hook Promise Foundation, as it rolls out the "Start with Hello!" training at schools like Eagle Rock High. Anna Marcos takes us there.
Ah, the joy of laughter and inclusion. And these students at Eagle Rock High are learning that they have the power to change their schools by reaching out, not just to their friends, but to those who are isolated, to the loners with no friends, because everyone needs to feel included.
Start with hello! Start with hello!
That's the message of the "Start with Hello!" training, a program by the Sandy Hook Promise Foundation for schools around the country. The group formed in the wake of the tragic Sandy Hook massacre in 2012, when a gunman killed 20 schoolchildren and six teachers.
It's a little over four years now since my seven-year-old son, Daniel, was shot to death, and there's not a minute, it's constantly with me, that my, the third child of my three children is gone. He's gone forever. If maybe the shooter that killed my little boy, maybe if somebody had one more conversation with that guy, this could have been very different.
Mark Barden and Nicole Hockley both lost their seven-year-old children, Daniel and Dylan, in the attack. They have made Sandy Hook Promise and its message of inclusion and kindness their own personal crusade.
We know our shooter was someone who was very chronically socially isolated, did not have a lot of contact, did not have a lot of people looking out for him.
And it teaches kids to notice kids, peers that are chronically socially isolated, and bringing them into the conversation, making them feel validated and connected.
So how easy is it? Can these students stand up for the loners and bring them into the circle?
This presentation is really simple, and like, it's just, you just say hello to people, and like, you can change people's lives.
It's not just individual kids, but schools as a whole that can make a difference. For example, students and teachers can get together to create events like No One Eats Alone Day, or Hey Day, where everyone wears name tags. They can also create posters or special events where everyone's included.
I know that other people aren't as lucky as I am, and that really sucks. So, I mean, I do my best to be nice to people.
The big takeaway here today, even a teenager can impact change through a simple act of kindness and friendship. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
For more information, visit sandyhookpromise.org. While school violence and bullying do go hand in hand, that's why the world-famous Harlem Globetrotters also did their part to share their children's outreach program, the ABCs of Bullying Prevention. Gil Reyes has more on their winning tips.
The Harlem Globetrotters show off their basketball wizardry to students at Paralos Ninos Elementary School in downtown, but when it comes to the topic of bullying, they're not playing around.
We never encourage kids to jump into bullying situations themselves. We always want you to go find an adult, so no one gets hurt physically.
Globetrotters Buckets Blakes, Flight Time Lang, and Elgato Melendez advise kids to take action and tell a teacher if they witness harassment at school. They add, "If a bully harasses you, be brave and walk away smiling." Bullies want to take away the power of happiness, so don't let them.
So if you walk away from them, and they're following you, you just smile, 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 and you lead them right to the nearest teacher.
This is all part of the team's ABCs of Bullying Prevention. C stands for compassion. Be compassionate to fellow students who were bullied.
Are you okay, man? You need a hug? Yeah, you do need a hug, baby.
Yeah, yeah. Spin him around, Gato.
He's my best friend in the whole!
One. Do you feel better? You feel better? See?
All part of a winning game plan. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Now, the team spreads this anti-bullying message at schools across the country. Well, it's not every day you get to shoot hoops with some of L.A.'s finest basketball players, but for some inner-city kids, that's exactly what they got to do. Rasha Goel has more on a program that's helping kids make some good shots in life.
These young kids are learning the fundamentals of basketball from actual Clippers players. They are part of the Junior Clippers Program, which gives kids ages 5 to 14 a chance to play some basketball while staying off the streets.
We're up to 48,000 youth playing basketball this year with the Junior Clipper label and 17 partners.
The program began in 2000 with 750 participants, and now 17 years later, has expanded to 48,000 participants. The Clippers have teamed up with the Department of Wrekin Parks, YMCA, Salvation Army, and Beyond the Bell, an after-school program to give these students an opportunity to participate in basketball.
It keeps them involved, keeps them learning, but more importantly, keeps them safe.
The program offers other life-enhancing skills in addition to physical activity.
Things about teamwork, and things about cooperation, and things about fortitude, and how to be a good winner and a good loser. And those are the things that the Clippers really believe is important. So when you hear them talking about character, that's what this program is about.
The Junior Clippers Program is more than just a basketball program. You know, we want to promote the academic side as well, so we have a sportsmanship program where the kids, as part of the Junior Clippers Program, write on one of three subjects, broad subjects, about what basketball means to them.
A game that teaches these kids to not only shine on the court, but also in everyday life. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Well, need a little indigenous art in your day? Well, head on over to Alvera Street's latest exhibit to support local artists and see everything from old-style churches to ancient Aztec warriors. Anna Marcos reports.
Step into the hallways of time, tradition, and culture south of the border, as this photo exhibit opens at the El Pueblo Historical Monument, with dozens of unique and haunting art pieces.
Each one showcases different parts of Mexican culture, from dance, indigenous culture, food, music, architecture.
This reception helps mark the opening of the exhibit and the work of nine different artists.
My photographs, they were, this time, they were mainly religious. I don't know why, because I have many subjects. There is so much architecture and so much art in churches that these were some of the pictures that I submit.
Hours are from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Tuesday through Sunday, and the art will be on exhibit until the end of the month. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Well, Chinese New Year started off with a bang, the bang of confetti guns and firecrackers in historic Chinatown. Gil Reyes has more from the celebration.
L.A.'s Chinatown rang in the Year of the Rooster, with its 118th annual Golden Dragon Parade and Festival.
It really showcases Chinese culture, and I think it brings all kinds of cultures around. If you look at the parade, there's a lot of different people in there, and we see a lot of different people come out.
The crowd of thousands included Tinesa Evans and her family.
I've been to Chinatown before, but it's been over like 12 or 13 years, and it's great to see how much more has developed since I've been here. There are a lot of new shops, there are a lot of new, like, activities for the kids, so I feel very comfortable.
The event on North Broadway celebrated a new year for one and a half million people of Chinese, Korean, and Vietnamese descent in Southern California. L.A. Chinatown's Central Plaza was divided into five sections on this day, each one representing one of the five Chinese elements: fire, metal, earth, wood, and water.
And in back of us here, we have the Water Village, which will demonstrate calligraphy, Chinese calligraphy, and also water painting.
I come every single year with my girlfriend, drink some beers, chew some poppers off, have a laugh with all the kids, watch a parade, it's great. The motorcycle cops are hilarious, and we gotta have a good time!
Gunghei Fat Choi, Happy New Year, the Year of the Fire Rooster. In L.A.'s Chinatown, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The festival has expanded over the decades to include more than 20 parade floats and multiple marching bands. While city leaders propose changes for new developments, a downtown landmark is denied historical designation, and a new way people who are homeless can pay off parking tickets. All these stories and more in City B. The Los Angeles City Council voted to move forward with several recommendations that would change the way development projects are considered. The recommendations include requiring developers to select environmental impact report consultants from a pre-approved city list, and directing that the city's 35 community plans be updated every six years. Some community plans, which provide guidelines for what can and cannot be built in a neighborhood, have not been updated in 15 years or more. The recommendations also clump all developer amendment requests to be considered together on a semi-annual basis, so officials can consider multiple development projects at once and their potential impacts more comprehensively. The L.A. City Council also approved the creation of a program that will allow people who are homeless, who receive parking tickets, to perform community service instead of paying the fine. Under the program, people who meet the federal definition of being homeless can go into one of the city's service provider agencies and apply to perform social services or community services. The program will cover a maximum of 10 parking citations and up to a combined value of $1,500 per year. A city council committee voted against Designated Parker Center, the Los Angeles Police Department's former headquarters and historic monument. The building is viewed by some as a symbol of the department's troubled past on race relations, and the committee ultimately went with that view over the recommendation of the Cultural Heritage Commission to grant it historical status. The city's Bureau of Engineering has recommended tearing it down to build a new civic building. A full traffic signal on North Figueroa Street and Avenue 51 in Highland Park was recently installed. North Figueroa has been identified as a dangerous street, which means a lot of car accidents happen here, resulting in severe injuries. This new traffic light in Council District 1 is part of the city's Vision Zero Initiative, which brings together transportation engineers, police officers, advocates, and policymakers to work towards creating safer streets in all L.A. communities. Well, L.A.'s own baseball team opened its doors for a huge neighborhood bash. The L.A. Dodgers Fan Fest was a chance to rub shoulders with a whole team of baseball legends. Anna Marcos has more.
If at first you don't succeed, try again. Tykes, big and small, got to batter up as the Dodgers Fan Fest hit a home run with Dodgers lovers.
We love the Dodgers, we bleed blue, our family is totally supportive, even though we haven't won a World Series.
It was wall-to-wall people in the parking lot, in the bleachers, in the stadium, and pretty much in every line, but these diehards showed their true blue colors every step of the way.
My son being a Dodger fan too, naturally, we had to go.
And of course, the lines were longest for the autographs, but no one seemed to mind.
Well, we come here every year, we really like to get excited about the upcoming Dodger season, of course, get a couple of autographs, check out the freebies, you get to go on the field, you get to check out the dugout, you get to check out the bullpen.
Kids of all shapes and sizes tried out their batting styles while hobnobbing with the Dodger elite, and best of all, this was all free. Oh, yes, lots and lots of freebies.
Especially that it's free, it helps out with the family, a big family that come here.
Okay, so some of us will still need a little extra practice to score that home run, but most fans seem to feel they scored big, as they spent the day with their biggest Dodger heroes. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Well, fans were also able to buy season tickets and all kinds of Dodger paraphernalia at the event. If you love all kinds of books and publications, this book fair is not to be missed. Puppets come alive during a weekend-long celebration and get a taste of authentic local culture. All this in this week's Things to Do. Printed Matter presents the fifth annual L.A. Art Book Fair, free and open to the public. The L.A. Art Book Fair is a unique event for artists' books, art catalogs, monographs, and periodicals presented by over 300 international presses, booksellers, antiquarians, artists, and independent publishers. Last year's book fair saw over 35,000 visitors over the course of three and a half days. It all takes place February 24 through the 26 at the Geffen Contemporary at Moca, located at 152 North Central Avenue. It's the third annual celebration of Bob Baker. Banning the whole weekend, the festival is a kickoff of a new chapter of the theater as a nonprofit announcing the plan for 50 more years of entertaining and enriching the lives of generations of Angelinos. Saturday, the imagination spills onto the First Street for a full-on-street festival, sponsored by City Council District 1. With round-the-clock puppet shows in the theater, tours, and outdoor stage of live music and entertainment, puppet-making workshops, and exhibition booths from the locals' art and community, there will also be street vendors, food trucks, walk-around entertainment, and more. The day culminates in a silent auction and variety show fundraising extravaganza. It all takes place February 25 through the 26 at the Bob Baker Marionette Theater at 1345 West First Street. For more, visit bobbakermarionettetheater.com. In the heart of Lamert Park thrives a group of community business members with a passion to develop an event rooted in the foundations of culture, art, music, and community. On the last Sunday of the month, Lamert Park Village invites the public over to enjoy a day filled with art exhibits, music, fashion, food, drumming, and other creative endeavors for the whole family. Plenty of DJs spinning, rymers rapping, and poets of the spoken word combined with traditional artists and a legendary drum circle. Don't miss the fun at Lamert Park Village. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook.
My vote.
My vote.
My vote counts.
Voting independently and privately is your right. Los Angeles County strives to use fully accessible poll sites or provides modifications to assure access to all voters with disabilities. These polling places are equipped with wheelchair-accessible booths, visual devices, and audio ballot booths where you can listen to your ballot choices. Each polling place is staffed with friendly, trained poll workers who are ready to assist voters at every step of the voting process. If you're unable to enter a polling place, curbside voting is available at all locations. And if you like to get things done early, you can vote by mail. To find a polling place, check accessibility, or register to vote, learn more at lavote.net or call 562-466-1310.
Your voice, your vote.
Don't worry, Patty, this isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Good morning. Good morning. Shhh. Good morning. Today is February 22nd, Wednesday. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call a roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Boisquen, Ossidio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Kresk, Corrigan, Martinez, Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Martinez moves, and Mr. Harris-Dawson seconds. Next.
Mr. President, that brings us to, or excuse me, commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonin moves, and Mr. Englander moves, since they addressed alike today. So, they, Bonin and Englander, move on that. What is next?
Items 1 through 3 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on all items.
Continue.
That brings us to items 4 through 21. They're items for which public hearings have been held. Please note that the ordinance date on the agenda for item number 6, recommendation number 4, is incorrect. The correct date of September 8, 2016, is accurately reflected in the Plumb Committee Report Recommendations and before council for consideration.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on those items. Specials members, Mr. Harris-Dawson.
33, sir.
33 for Mr. Harris-Dawson. Okay, so let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Continue, Mr. Clerk.
Very good, sir. And those ordinances will go over for one week for a second read, and let's reconsider later today with 12 members.
Okay, I hope we are at 12. Please remind me when that occurs.
Very good, sir.
And then we will deal with that. So, next.
Items 22 through 34 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on all items.
Okay, continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations or items called special.
Okay, I've been informed that item 32, we need to continue until this Friday, which I believe is the 24th of February.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order.
Very good.
That brings us where?
That brings us to items called special or presentations.
Okay. Mr. Englander.
Mr. President, can I, on item 15, reconsider item 15 for receiving file.
Okay, on item 15, let's vote for reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Englander.
Yeah, just to receiving files. We can re-vote on that as a receiving file now.
Okay, so now we'll do that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. Ms. Martinez, can I get you to do a favor? We're going to go into the presentation portion of today's agenda. Mr. Clerk, so I'm going to ask Mr. Bloomingfield to join me at the center podium. Thank you, Madam President. If I could ask all of the individuals that have helped us with our Our Cycle LA program, please join us if you'd come and stand behind Mr. Bloomingfield and myself. Madam President and members, before Mr. Bloomingfield and I begin, we have a video that I'd like to show. It kind of sets up a little bit as to what we will be talking about. So, if we can roll the video. Who's that handsome devil right there?
We talked to you a couple of days ago. Did you know you were getting a computer?
No. No. No idea.
Awesome, awesome. And you get free Wi-Fi for four years, free internet service. Awesome. Can't get no better than that.
This is called the Our Cycle LA Program. Our cycle takes outdated or unusable city of L.A. computers, and instead of throwing them away and allowing them to build up waste in area landfills, refurbishes them for families in need.
The computers had belonged to departments throughout the city of Los Angeles, but became unusable after a citywide systems upgrade. The computers were later refurbished, and over the past year and a half, given as good as new to struggling families. The latest recipients: kids coming home from Camp Wesson. Camp Wesson is a free summer camp for disadvantaged youth founded by City Council President Herb Wesson.
Being that this is the 10th anniversary, we also decided that it would be a great opportunity to try to do our part to close the digital divide. We all know that if children don't have access to the internet in today's world, they're so far behind everyone.
Let's give a round of applause for the, at least the, at least the Panama straw hat that I was, it was, it was like 100 degrees, and I do, for the past 10 years, have had the privilege to take about 100-plus kids on a three-day camping trip, and I make sure that they wear caps so they don't get heat stroke, and the old man wore a cap himself. This, the clip gave you a feel of what we at the city of Los Angeles have been trying to do to help those from challenged neighborhoods, to help put them or get them up to speed where it relates to computers and internet, so that the children from these areas have an opportunity to compete with other children that have more ability, not more abilities, but individuals that have more resources than they have. This idea was the brainchild of my colleague, councilman Bob Bloomingfield, the mayor's office, and myself. We knew that we were going to upgrade the computers in the city of Los Angeles. We knew that there were going to be a lot of computers that would be available with their destination to be one of our dump sites. So, the three offices collaborated, and I do want to say led by Justin in my office, Justin Wesson, to come up with a way for us to take advantage of this. It could not have been done if it wasn't for our chair of IT, Bob Bloomingfield, and the mayor's office. And it wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for this group of unbelievable, committed people that stand behind and beside me. When we first started this program, which was we, through Hackla, we have helped nonprofit organizations organizations and housing projects by putting together computer labs. We also helped, in Mr. Bloomingfield's area, started out helping families, the same in my district, but we, what we found out is that there was a missing ingredient, and that was that we didn't have the ability to provide internet services. So, we tried to do everything that we can, and it was based on conversations with the federal government and a program that the Obama administration put in place for schools that we were able to, along with every computer that we give away, that family, that group, that organization gets free internet until the year 2020. So, that was the missing ingredient, and that's what makes, I think, this program work so well. I do wanna highlight that we've had, I've had the opportunity to join Mr. Rue in his district at one of these computer giveaways, Mr. Buscaino and I, Mr. Price. We have other members that have already done it, and I think council District 13 is next, and I think council District 12. I was in Watts with Mr. Buscaino, and we gave these computers to young unwed mothers that are in high school trying to get their degree, and I have enjoyed this entire program, but nothing like being with these young ladies. And so, this program has just been phenomenal. It would not have been successful if it wasn't for Mr. Ross, who heads RITA, Tony Royster at GSD, Enrique with Sanitation, organization called Human IT, I call them Human It, LACI, and Hackla, just to name a few. So, this is a program that we will continue to move forward as long as we have computers. And I have to tell you this, to see the face of the families and these young kids when they take these refurbished computers home, for us to know that we are giving them an opportunity to compete with anyone is one of the most satisfying things that I've had the opportunity to do. But now, I'd like to ask Mr. Bloomingfield to say a few words where it relates to his experience during this R-Cycle LA.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for so vigorously embracing this idea and for making it real. I mean, this is, this is part and parcel of a bigger vision, to make Los Angeles the most connected city in the nation, if not the world. But part of that is you've gotta start by getting, getting those who don't have access access. And when you give somebody a computer with internet access, you're not just giving them hardware and, and access to every bit of information in the world. You're giving them opportunity. That's what this is about. It's about giving Angelenos opportunity. The digital divide is pernicious. It is a precursor to the income divide, to the prison divide, to all the divides that we see throughout society. But having access to information and having access to this kind of opportunity can help bridge all of these divides. And I really appreciate the fact that so many folks came together to make this happen, starting with our own, you know, ITA and GSD really helped spearhead this at the beginning to make it happen, to take, basically, make lemonade out of lemons. You know, we were, we were faced with a bit of a crisis in this city when, when our XP was going, was no longer gonna be supported, and we all of a sudden had to, had to upgrade all of these computers throughout the city of Los Angeles. And it was a travesty, because a lot of these computers were perfectly good computers, but given the system that we have, it created a vulnerability that wouldn't be supported. So, we had to do that and had to make that expense as a city. And then the question is, what do you do with all this extra stuff? Normally, with, you know, the way bureaucracies function, it would go, it would go to the landfill, it would go unused, but there were folks who were willing to think out of the box, to take this computer box and think out of the proverbial box, and say, how do we make this into something that can benefit people? And through partnerships, because we couldn't just do it on our own. We have great ITA folks, but we wanted to have the support, the nonprofit support, so that when someone gets this computer, if it doesn't work after three weeks, they don't just make it into a very expensive paperweight. But having the nonprofit organizations that are, Human IT that we mentioned, that are willing to partner, that are gonna support the folks who get these computers for the next several years, support their OnRamp onto the internet, having all of the different partners that are able to make this happen, when it's the internet service, the support network, that's coming together and creating opportunity for Angelenos. And that's what makes me so excited about it, and it all comes down to what council president said. When, when you're out on one of these giveaways and you see a family come, and the smile on their face when they realize they're getting this computer, that is something that they've heard about, that they know, they might have been to the library, they know how to use a computer, they've been to the library to try to get access, they've gone places to the Starbucks to try to get internet service, now at their home, they're gonna have the hardware, and they're gonna have the OnRamp to the internet, and all of the access and opportunity that goes with that. So, I'm thrilled to be part of this. Thank you, council president, for, for helping lead this effort, and all of the folks who were behind us, who are, who are the partners that are making this idea into a reality. Thank you.
And, and I'm gonna issue a challenge to all of the businesses in the great city of Los Angeles. You already have state-of-the-art computer systems, but you also, with regularity, change out those computer systems. So, I'm gonna ask you to work with us to ensure that these discarded computers you give to us, help us with the resources to refurbish them, help us creatively come up with way to continue to obtain internet, and let us close the digital divide. So, that is my challenge to all of the businesses in Los Angeles. I am certain that they are phenomenal tax write-offs if you can work with us to do this, and we'll get the city attorney's office involved, and we will figure out a way to try to ensure that every family in Los Angeles has a computer and has access to the internet. Together, there is nothing that we cannot do. At this point, I'd like to bring up a couple of folk to say just a few words that have been instrumental. And I wanna start off with Ted Ross. He and Tony Royster not only have directed their departments to be fully engaged, they literally come out themselves when we are distributing these computers. They don't have to do that, but they do it, and I think they truly enjoy it. So, let's start off with Ted. Would you please come up and say a few words?
Thank you so much. We sincerely appreciate and love the leadership coming from our city council and from our mayor, Eric Garcetti. I live, I'm blessed and honored to live in a time in which technology has been absolutely transformative. As an IT person, I would certainly debate and argue that the internet is the greatest invention of the last 100 years, and yet so many portions of our society aren't gaining the benefits and gaining the advantages that I get to enjoy every day and my family gets to enjoy. So, we're so proud to be a part of R-Cycle LA, in which we are connecting and bridging that digital divide, so that students can get their homework done at home, and that adults can find jobs and could build businesses, and that this can be seen across all of Los Angeles, regardless of who you are and where you live. Some of the numbers I thought were outstanding. We have salvaged 10,000 PCs from the city departments across the city. Over 3,000 have already been refurbished and distributed across six council districts, and that's just to date. Over 5,000 computer systems have been properly demanufactured and recycled, which means it keeps the e-waste out of our landfills. More than 100 youth and young adults have been trained on refurbishing and computer-related work, some of whom were formerly incarcerated. Of course, any great effort, as the council member said, is not done by one person, but by a group of people. And so, I'll certainly give up the podium to Tony Royster, my cherished colleague, as well as, as was said before, sanitation, Hackla, Human IT. We worked with Dodgers, we worked with Best Buy, we worked with so many different organizations that even, these are just some of the representatives of this great effort.
Well, I can take this opportunity to thank the council president and council member Bloomingfield for their leadership, and also the mayor's office. This is an outstanding program, an opportunity, once probably, is very difficult where the city can directly give back to its constituents. And it's a very, very impactful program, and we're very, very thankful working with our partners, ITA, sanitation, and all of the nonprofits. This is a great program, and something we should always continue in the future. Thank you very much.
So, did Enrique make it? Okay, well, I wanna have you speak on behalf of sanitation. We're gonna put you in the spotlight.
Good morning. Alex Huru for L.A. Sanitation. On behalf of the men and women of L.A. Sanitation, we wanna thank you, council president, for your leadership on this. Justin was instrumental part of keep pushing us when we were running into challenges during this process. Thank you, Councilman Bloomingfield, for also allowing us, for giving us the idea and the challenge to move forward. I've been out at the, giving out these computers with my staff, and the smiles on the children and the families were, really, you cannot put any dollar value to it. Thank you for your leadership, and we look forward to expanding the program. Again, this is, I think, just a seed, and we look to expand it citywide with all council offices. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I do wanna just really give a special shout-out. It's, it is with the greatest of pride that I have to commend my son, Justin Wesson.
Oh, Justin.
Because he was the force.
Take a bow, Justin.
Like Alex said, when, when this hit roadblock after roadblock after roadblock after roadblock, I know there were times when I was ready to give up, but he refused to, and this program is changing the lives of a lot of young people. Now, if we can get a rep from Human IT, come forward.
Good morning, Gabe.
Good morning. It's good to see a lot of familiar faces here. Thank you, council president, for the introduction. I just wanna start off by saying, my name is Gabe Middleton. I'm the co-founder and CEO of Human IT. We are in charge of the refurbishment and the distribution, as well as support process, for R-Cycle LA. It's been an extremely amazing journey to help start this program, and to be a part of it is a real honor. But before I go too deep into anything else, I wanna make sure I thanked all the council members who've been, who've been a part of this R-Cycle A journey, and being so gracious in, in providing a space to hold these events. I also wanna give a special shout-out to council president Wesson for having the wisdom and idea for coming up with a creative way to shrink the digital divide. I think he said it best a while ago, he's making geeks cool, right? Those are his words. So, thanks for understanding that. And again, Justin, you were really, thank you so much for all the support over the couple, last couple of years. You've been a really good partner. Again, ITA, sanitation, GSD, everyone who I've met over the last couple of years, you guys have been tremendous. Thank you so much. But I don't wanna belabor the point of the digital divide too much. It's an extremely important issue in today's, in today's world. But I also, I wanna touch on something a little bit more unique, and that's, that's opportunity, and that's what really our R-Cycle LA represents. It's about providing opportunity of technology to those who need it, so that they could, that way they could take part in, and even democracy in a better way. They get access to information so that, so that they could shape the communities that they live in, right? But I also wanna touch on our personal story at Human IT LA. We have a saying at Human IT, it's, we try to give what we, what we try to receive, and we're giving opportunity because we needed that opportunity ourselves. So, R-Cycle LA has helped two young co-founders, myself and James Jack, who started this business about five years ago, have an opportunity to make a difference here in the city that we love, so we're very thankful for that. And, and it's been a great journey, and we look forward to moving, moving ahead with this. Thank you.
And, and geeks are cool. Now, I'd like to have a rep from LACI, Clean Tech Incubator. Do we have somebody here? Or, come on, don't be shy. We let tall people speak here. Come on.
I'm just here to make you look good. Thank you very much. It's been really a pleasure to, to be involved with this, this crew and the leadership of our council president and, and all of our fine council members here. What, what I really wanna say on behalf of LACI and our involvement, you know, we're, we're an incubator of young organizations and young ideas, and we are ourselves a product of public-private partnership, and what really can happen when all parties collaborate and work together. And this is a prime example of, really, the magic that can happen when great minds get together and there's willingness to, to come together in order to do good, and to find ways through obstacles, be creative, and, and do that. And there's so many creative people, you know, in both the public and private sector that we've had a pleasure of working with for this project. It's really, it's really been an honor, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, do we have somebody from the Housing Authority, from Hackla? Please come forward. Do we have anybody from the Housing Authority? Don't, come on. I see you.
Hurry up, because Mr. Rue wants to speak too.
Good morning. My name is Annie Kim. I'm the director and director of program development and communications for the Housing Authority. Thank you for having us here today. I do wanna spend a few moments just giving a quick overview of the Housing Authority. We have over 22,000 individuals living across 14 communities in Los Angeles, typically known as the projects. We don't like to call it the projects. We call it communities, or public housing communities. These are strong communities where a lot of, you know, strong mothers and fathers are trying to raise their children in a safe environment, and we support that. Really thankful to council president Herb Wesson for allowing us to join in this program of our cycle. HUD Washington has called this program, LA's approach, a smart approach, forward-thinking approach, because of our collaborative effort. We've been named, you know, one of the best connect home partners. Our cycle has been recognized nationally in its efficient model. Over the last couple of years, the Housing Authority has connected over 2,200 families with internet access, and many of those families and senior citizens were connected thanks to R-Cycle LA. So, now, we also see usage reports from a couple of our buildings, and I know our IT officer is here, and he was just sharing this morning, that they're very much using the internet that they've been given. So, that is excellent news, that they're using it. And what's, and what's more, through our partnership with organizations like Human IT, we've been able to provide technical support, which is really important for, for very novice users of internet access, and also been providing digital training as well. This year in 2017, we have goals of connecting over 400 additional units. Luisia Takor, IT officer, will be leading that effort by providing a mesh solution at San Fernando Gardens in the next couple of months. So, that's additional 400 units coming online. So, thank you so much.
Well, gentlemen, I have to admit that I was reluctant at the beginning, and I think I've shared this with some of you when we hosted our event at the Mid Valley YMCA, but I have to be honest, it was one of the most moving events I've ever hosted in my district. I know we didn't make it onto the video, but I was moved, not only by the fact that people were so gracious and so, felt so happy to receive a computer, but people were actually crying at my event. People were moved to tears because they were receiving a computer for their kids. So, I wanna thank both of you for coming up with this program. I think it's benefiting so many parts of our district. But I also wanna give a shout-out to Galpin Ford and IMT, who are the two companies who provided the Wi-Fi access for my families in my district. I hope that we have enough computers to, to do this again this year, because I think it was something that we have to continue to support. So, thank you to both of you for, for coming up with such a brilliant way to recycle our equipment here in the city. I wanna pass it on to Mr. Rue.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President, and I, and I definitely concur, and I really thank the leadership of council president Wesson, Councilman Bloomingfield, for coming up with this program. And I really wanna thank the R-Cycle, Human IT, ITA, and all the other departments, because I gotta tell you, we had the fortunate opportunity to participate in CD4, and council president Wesson came as well, and when he came, he actually And when he came, he actually came on time, but half our computers were gone because we had people come an hour earlier, because they were so excited to receive these computers. And I came on time as well, and I said, what's going on here? I thought we're not supposed to start for another 10 minutes. And we had such a long line, we had to start in advance. And not only that, we had primarily families, children, family of, with four children in it, and I was asking the kids who gets to go on first, and the older siblings, allowing, saying that their younger brothers and sisters are going to get to get on the computer first. They were very excited about the computer, but more excited than the computer was the internet access. Because they all knew that a computer without internet access means nothing. So they were super excited by when I told them that they're going to have free internet access till 2020, they were even more excited. We also had a couple of single mothers there who were going to use this computer to do job searches. So this was, and that's right, and we delivered that computer to her car, Mr. Wesson. And so this was an amazing experience, a very worthwhile program. We gave away close to 100 computers. We can't wait till next year when we participate again, and thank you so much for your leadership on this.
Well, that concludes speakers on the queue. Again, thank you very much to both of you for your leadership on this. And everyone in our city family, thank you very much for participating.
Let us give out the, I think that's Bureau of Sanitation.
General Services?
This is too fancy. I don't have all my good glasses.
Clean Tech?
Incubator? Lacy?
Human IT? I, who is here? Housing Authority? Housing Authority? Anyway, thank you all so very much. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, we're going to go ahead and reconsider five and six.
Very good, Madam President. That would be a two-vote matter, first on reconsideration of the ordinances, and then on the matters themselves.
Okay, let's open the roll on reconsideration for item five and six. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, those two items are before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Very well, let's move on to multiple speaker cards. We're going to move on to Mr. Previn. Yes, Mr. Price.
Excuse me, may we get 24th with, please? Item 24th with.
Item 24th with for Mr. Curran Price.
Thank you.
Please move on to our next speaker. Mr. Previn, are you here? Good morning, sir.
Madam President, as the speaker comes up, I'd like to note that there is an amending motion which has been circulated and posted to item 33A.
33A, there is an amendment that's being circulated. Sir, let me remind you, you filled out cards for public comment, items 1A, 1B, 2, 3, 28, 33, and 34. Whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you. It is Eric Previn from CD2, and I am running for the office of Mayor of Los Angeles. Item 34 has been continued, or 32 has been continued. But first of all, that was very touching to see Mr. Bloomingfield and Mr. Wesson congratulating ITA. Very lovely. Both of them today in item 1, CD7, where Mr. Wesson is not quite filling, but sitting next to the vacated seat by Mr. Fuentes. And Mr. Bloomingfield from CD3 are leaning individuals in those districts, CD7 and CD3. It's heartbreaking, once again, because it continues, although it has been dramatically reduced. And it's nice, because Bloomingfield is not running now. He's running unopposed, and Wesson obviously is in an off-cycle. So they are, these must have been continued from prior meetings, and that's why they're still on the agenda. Item number two, Mr. Sadio is bringing a full liquor cabinet to the CVS in his district. I believe it's in Pico Union, 1300 West Washington. This is one of two liquor licenses today. Also, item three, Mr. Krikorian is bringing one on Burbank Boulevard, where Mr. Terosian has diligently worked with Tony, I forget his last name, but the guy from the Valley Village Neighborhood Council. In both instances, LAPD is getting right on board. They say, we do not oppose. And in both cases, the one from Mr. Sadio's district, I would just simply ask you to look closely, because the reporting is completely fishy. The incidents of crime seem much lower than what the LA Times is reporting. So I don't know if that's a factor in the decision-making. I think it should be. And I think for the 7-Eleven group, we want to thank Price Waterhouse. We want to thank M and, I believe it's M and B or M and J lobbying, and then the Ross Group. All of these lobbyists have been feeding like little thirsty animals at a river on this body to get these liquor licenses pushed through. And obviously, it's all in conjunction with Mr. Bonin's bold and brave Vision Zero initiative to reduce road death. But the problem is, is that by making liquor available in these areas, now, there's no opposition, because the neighborhood councils took care of that in CD2. I don't know that this is really, you know, something worth fighting against, but I do think that it's not helping. I don't understand why we are providing these licenses when, for example, in the CD2 area, there are three other liquor stores, or places where you can, they're different licenses, 21 and a 20, ABC licenses. But it's enough already in a neighborhood. These are right against a neighborhood. In Mr. Sadio's district, it's near a freeway, and it's a real, they're open till 2:00 in the morning selling liquor. Now, that's quite a surprise. In CD2, where Krikorian is holding court, they're closing at 11:00 PM. But who's going to enforce that? I mean, we can't get a cop to come out on a call in my district, CD2, for, unless you have a real, serious crime. They just don't, you know, there's too many things going on, and too few patrols, as we've been hearing about in our Public Safety Committee meetings. So I don't know. I just cannot believe that this body continues in the public interest and necessity to do this. It feels slightly off.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. You have one minute for general public comment.
So in my general public comment, I just want to reinforce that the City Ethics Commission had a meeting yesterday, and my microphone's been turned down, I don't know why. But the City Ethics Commission did have a meeting, and they talked about three special items. One was for Cisco. As you recall, a number of the council members took a little jaunt thereby losing a quorum, so Mr. Wesson had to cancel the meeting. I believe it was Sadio, Bloomingfield, Englander, and Mr. Price. They all went to Europe in connection with Mayor Garcetti's smart cities have a look see. Cisco got fined $12,500, which is nothing. They lobby over a half a million dollars on their own with Arnie Bergoff and Associates, one of the inside lobbyists who works in the same office as Englander, Knobby and Allen. That's the uncle of Mitchell Englander. I just find the fact that they're taking a little rap on the wrist when they, it means nothing to them, is appalling, when Mr. Platesz, who is a mayoral candidate who got nailed for $36,000 for not sort of posting something, he didn't do anything wrong. Everybody knows he didn't do anything wrong. But once again, it's the Ministry of Truth down here in the City Council.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Krikorian?
I'd like to ask that item number three be continued, please, until June 6th.
Without objection, that will be the order. Thank you. Next speaker, Herman. Herman, you are speaking on general public comment, items 1A, 1B, 2, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29A, 30, 31, 33, and 34. Start his clock, please.
Here we go again. Item two, alcoholism, convenient and necessity. Alcoholism, necessity. Let's talk about Mr. Sadio's staff, Freddie and his DUI. Let's talk about Justin, Mr. President Herb Wesson's son DUI.
This item regards alcohol sales, Madam President.
Mister, excuse me, I have the floor, Mister City Attorney.
And again, the speaker is not on topic.
Speaking about alcoholism, convenience and necessity. It impacts all our communities, and the majority of the time, it's African-American communities that are impacted by the adverse atrocities of drinking alcohol for a convenience. And a reminder that in CD1, off of 1300 West Washington Boulevard, you mean to tell me that it's okay to drink and drive? You mean to tell me it's okay to wreck a city public car into anything you want and say, I'm sorry, I got emotional and I crashed? Or, I'm handicapped and I'm trying to drive?
Madam President, the speaker is not on top.
Mr. Herman, you are not speaking on any of the items. I'm going to ask you to sit down.
Now, item number three been postponed. Now I'm going to the back of the pages, rookie. When it comes to lighting in CD14, all of you are invited to Boyle Heights, El Sereno, and Highland Park, because the lighting there is just as poor as it is in any other elected official's community. Why? Because that's how prostitution and drugs are sold, with poor lighting. Now going on to the other items of the agenda, sir, rookie, for the record. Mister Rookie, I signed up on all items like I do all the time.
And the speaker is still not talking to the agenda items, Madam President.
Get to the point, Mr. Herman.
Resolution relative to removing various properties from rent escrow. Just like in item one on liens. Liens are unconstitutional. You bring emotional distress and harm to the people in our community who are African-American and people who are losing their homes because you decide to put a lien because you say, sorry to say, but your property looks very dirty. You should storage your cars and dirty trash inside your garage. But no, no, sir, there's not enough room. Not all of us have a white gated fence to hide our chinchero shit. That's right, shit that you call, it's our property. We have nowhere else to put it, because we're poor.
And again, the speaker has veered off topic.
Mr. Herman, Mr. Herman, you're done. Thank you very much. You're done for the day.
And now he's disrupting the meeting, Madam President.
You continue to disrupt the meeting. Sergeants, can you please show Mr. Herman his way out, please? You've been warned, you've been asked to stay on the items that you filled out cards for. You have not done any of that, so thank you very much. Have a good day, you're done. Thank you.
And the speaker is continuing to disrupt the meeting as he goes back to his seat.
Next speaker, Sean. Herman, goodbye, Herman. Sean, can you wait for just a second till Mr. Herman's? He continues to disrupt the meeting, Mr. City Attorney? Thank you very much, Mr. Herman. Have a good day. Goodbye.
Just in case.
He continues to disrupt the meeting as he's exiting the council chambers.
Just in case the recorder is not picking this up, he's continuing to shout and disrupt the meeting as he's removed from the room.
Sean, I apologize for that. Good morning, how are you?
Just saying hi to my fans here.
Oh, that's, let me remind you, Sean, for just a second, you filled out cards for general public comment, item 1A, 1B, and number two, okay?
Yeah. Item number one, I support. Item number two, I support. General public comment. Folks, Tuesday is the 20th anniversary of the North Hollywood shootout. I remember where I was. Anybody but Eric Garcetti, I'm sorry to disappoint you, but I have, a lot of friends have come up to me on the street, and they tell me they don't like Eric Garcetti for what he stands for. I'm sorry to say this. Watch LA City, he's 35, votes, they'll tell you who to vote for. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Mr. Wesson?
Madam President and members, it is an honor for me to present to you on the 100th anniversary of our great mayor, Tom Bradley. Students from my district, Tom Bradley Elementary School, would you please stand up? Stand up. And if we could get the camera, wave into the camera. We are so happy and excited that you could be with us today. So anyway, one more round of applause, Tom Bradley Elementary.
Thank you.
Thank you, boys and girls, and welcome. We're ready for our presentation. Mr. Sadio, are you ready, sir? Very well.
Hey, young guys, how are you guys doing? Welcome to the City Hall, your City Hall. I look forward to you guys coming back. You went to Tom Bradley's school? I used to work for him. He was one of my first jobs. He's a great man.
Morning.
You ready? You gonna be my friends? Boy and all the kids and everything, did I miss anything? Ready? Madam President, ready?
We are ready.
Okay, colleagues, good morning. Sergio, Sergio, I said it in Spanish and English at one time. Sergio Infanzon is the genius behind this. Although the notes tell me that National Engineers Week began in 1951 to celebrate the many contributions engineers make to our everyday life, I want to acknowledge Sergio Infanzon, a former planning deputy, a former member of my staff, now the planning director of a local city, for putting an impetus to this occasion. It began as a day, it's now a week. It's an opportunity to bring young people here to City Hall to understand the importance of STEM in our life. If a young person is interested in making a difference in our world, engineering is a great choice. I am joined today by the executive team of the Bureau of Engineers and members of the American Society of Civil Engineers. This week, we have students from 12 schools, representing CD1, CD15, and CD9, and they're participating in a whole range of activities. Of course, all of them love the egg drop, the boat design, and then the mission to Saturn. This is the fourth year that we've done this. There'll be a girls' day at the LA Zoo, and then finally, a high school career day. Our main goal is to do outreach to students, K through 12, to introduce them to the fields of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. Engineers Week allows us to provide students an opportunity to engage. And I want to thank my colleague, Joe Buscino, and members of his committee, the Board of Public Works, who has been extremely supportive in our efforts, and I look forward to his leadership moving this program forward. A special thank you to the American Society of Civil Engineers, who has partnered with our office and the City of Los Angeles for a fourth year in a row. Laura Rocket from the American Society of Civil Engineers is here with us, and we will hear from her. But before that, Laura Rocket, that's a great name. That is a name for an engineer. There's a hidden secret. But someone who also needs a thank you here today is one person who helps the city run efficiently and on time, someone who's always helped with our projects, Gary Lee Moore. Although Gary Lee Moore is not with us, because he went to a ceremony right down the hallway, and instead, I have Joe Buscino. Let's have Laura Rocket.
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of the American Society of Civil Engineers. We're excited. This is our fourth year celebrating National Engineers Week here in Los Angeles. And just briefly, I just want to say thank you to the council members who have supported our event, and to the City of Los Angeles, especially the Bureau of Engineering, for partnering with us to make this a big success. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Laura Rocket. And thank you, Mr. Sadio, for our fourth annual Engineers Week, something I know you took on when you first arrived here in City Council. Really want to, I appreciate and acknowledge the work that you're doing, as well as Sergio, your deputy, who has taken on this event. your deputy, who has taken on this event year after year. I do want to recognize my colleagues on the Public Works Committee, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Price, Mr. Rue, and Ms. Martinez, who embrace this effort and appreciation of our fourth annual Engineers Week. I'd also like to thank the American Society of Civil Engineers and the volunteers with us today who have helped us organize the Los Angeles Young Member Forum and all the events involved in Engineers' Week here in City Hall and throughout the city. I know we are also joined by city, uh, students, rather, from our LA Unified School District schools throughout the City of Los Angeles. I do want to recognize, uh, and put a spotlight on a number of middle schoolers, specifically in my district, Dana Middle School, uh, the school districts, one of the school district's newest steam magnet schools. And as Chair of Public Works Committee for the past five years, I've developed a great appreciation and respect for engineers and the work that they do day in and day out. And simply put, cities would not be possible without engineers. Engineers design the basic underlying building blocks that we rely on every day that are often overlooked and taken for granted, like the roadway network that allows you to drive to work to the grocery store each and every day, the underground pipes that bring fresh water to your kitchen and take wastewater away from your bathroom, and so much more. Our economy depends on infrastructure to provide power for factories to transport goods and services and telecom cables to transmit information to banks and customers. Our safety depends on infrastructure to withstand storms and natural events, keeping our home safe from flooding and other damage. But today, we are seeing a new innovative field of engineering that focuses on bridging technology and science. There's no better example of that than a big project that we're working on in Council District 15, Alta Sea. Alta Sea is a blue tech institution located at the historic waterfront in San Pedro. It will inspire your generation, younger generation, rather, to research, innovate, and create a more sustainable marine environment. It's a shining example, the future of science, technology, mathematics, engineering. Um, so for all of our students who are here in City Hall, who are thinking about a future in the sciences, keep in mind that Alta Sea will be an option for you, that you could be one of the first people to be involved in the future of ocean exploration and research. So, no matter which direction our students decide to take, I do want to recognize and thank this council and the mayor, the Board of Public Works, um, for taking a moment to, to pause and reflect on the work that engineers do throughout our city, but also embrace our future generation in the field of engineering. So, thank you so much, Mr. 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 Sedio.
Gentlemen, we have one person, oh.
We have Deborah, Deborah Weintraub from the Bureau of Engineering.
Okay, after, after Deborah, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Council members, it's a great pleasure to be here today, um, and we really, as the, the Bureau of Engineering, all of our professional staff who work with you, it's our honor to serve you. It's our honor to work with the city and to make sure that the city continues to function and run, run well. I really appreciate this, this, um, focus on our professions and on the technical fields of science and the arts. Thank you very much.
We have Mr. Price on the cue, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, as we celebrate Engineers Week, I just want to acknowledge those who have been part of the, part of organizing the 2017 Public Works Historically Black College and University Recruitment Tour. Uh, this has been a member-led initiative spearheaded by black engineers in MOU 8 and 17, and supported by members of MOU 36. It's a common good project between labor and the Department of Public Works to uphold the mayor's directives concerning diversity and job equity in the City of Los Angeles, along with SEIU's commitment to economic and racial justice. Uh, we have a number of their members here today, and if you could just stand up, members. I want to commend you for your efforts. And again, let's, uh, let's give them a nice round of applause. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, we're going to move on to more speakers. Antonia Ramirez? Antonia Ramirez, are you in council chambers? There she is. Ms. Ramirez, I'm going to remind you that you filled out a card for a general public comment, items 30, 31, 33, and 34.
I'm sorry, again, please.
General public comment, and then items 30, 31, 33, and 34.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
General comment, bravo and long live President Donald Trump, el jefe, who is the great Moses and defender of life, liberty, justice, and freedom. Back to his beloved America and the American people who have given graciously to the world since the inception of the colonies. Now they feel undaunting hope and love and just freedom and zest and zeal for life. And Trump and his ethical administration will have zero tolerance for the unlawful, illegal, safe haven sanctuary cities in Los Angeles and across America. No more funding, no money, and no grants. Take it up. So, thank you, and it is time to deport all violent, jealous, nosey, uncivilized, diabolically wicked and evil, comekaka savages and racist hate mongering wetbacks and chungo Latino pussies, pigs, and thieves. Deport the Dreamers as well. They are all felons. The reptilian lizards are alive and well. Their agenda is to destroy America as the nasty, filthy schmuck George Soros. Please do not reelect Eric Garcetti. And recall all the council members. God bless America and Donald Trump. Now I get to speak? Thank you, ma'am.
On the four items that you filled out a card for.
One more.
You want me to repeat those for you?
One moment, ma'am. Um, yes, would you please?
Okay, let's do, uh, you said item 30, 31, 33, and 34.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. Um, item number 30, we say hell no. Um, they want, um, they want additional fundings for, uh, after-school educations and safety programs. Hell no. These Latino kids savages are gang indoctrinated. How many programs do we have after school, and for how many years have we taxpayers paid for it to the point of we living on the streets? How dare we keep putting money, money, money? And what are they? They're out there gang banging, vandalizing graffiti, destroying property, disrespecting the elderly, violating the rule of law. Why do we keep pumping money, pumping money, while middle-class Americans on the streets and homeless, never mind our beloved military veterans? That is a disaster and catastrophe. How dare we put money for these? They need a good kick in the ass is what they need, and their parents don't teach them right from wrong. They want empalagosos, empalagosos. They want, want, want. Stop funding these pigs. No more after-school programs. Teach them and give them a good belt in the ass. And 31, consider, Bloomingfield, I got to thank you. Bloomingfield actually came out on the news to, um, to talk about the gangs in the San Fernando Valley. God bless Bloomingfield who's had the balls to come up and say-
I believe we're not on item 31, Madam President.
We have a gang problem. Thank you, Bloomingfield. You stood up to the plate and said, "We got gang problems."
Again, Madam President, we're not on topic.
And my residents are complaining. God bless you, Bloomingfield. You got balls, man. Uh, la heim, you know? Anyway, and, uh, 32, Jesus Christ, Corretts and Wezar. Jesus Christ, Church of Christ, man. Listen, you need to do a lot more praying, man, Wezar. You need to clean up the city and clean up all the shingles and-
No, Ms. Ramirez, you cannot direct any comments to this-
In 33, shelter crisis.
A specific council member. You got to be general comments.
It is my opinion, with all due respect, President, madam. Anyway, um, we've got enough shelters, and you know what? They don't provide like the Samaritan home. They don't provide Wi-Fi. They don't provide TV. They don't provide, they don't maintain the properties, or they don't maintain the premises. You can't have these agencies that are, are, wherever they are located. They are filthy. They are dirty. They have MRSA. They have bedbugs. They have scabies. They have, uh, strains of different staph infections. You've got, uh, a gamut of bacteria, and nobody, not even the, the big kahunas, bother cleaning, disinfecting, and just cleaning. Put firebombs or those foggers. Disinfect these agencies, or they should be shut down. Provide Wi-Fi. Samaritan home. Pastor Pam. Provide Wi-Fi, TV, and a suitable place to live, but keep it clean for crying out loud. You don't want homeless people with dirt already. We don't want to live like that. Clean the goddamn premises for-
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Thank you so much. Have a good day. The next speaker is Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, you filled out cards for items 1A, 1B, 2, 22, 28, 29A, and 33.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I may point out, if you're deaf or hard of hearing and you're in this building here, there's, there's no, uh, translation on the monitor into, into text. Okay, uh, let's talk about item 1, building safety, doing a good job, number 2. This, uh, gives CVS a license to sell alcoholic beverages. Per square mile, we have more licenses to sell alcoholic beverages than any city in America, and we also have more hit-and-run drivers than, unsolved cases than any other city in, in America. And, uh, number 3 is 7-Eleven, another alcohol license. And then we go to, uh, 20, 22, and 22, uh, hearing date for maintenance of a street, and, uh, 22, and then we go to 20, 28. 28 is, uh, fire and police personnel. This, uh, is a break for fire, the fire personnel to increase their pension. They're not going to talk about it. The deal was made, LF, LAFD, uh, unions, put money in your pockets, and then, uh, this deal. And if it isn't that, destroy my credibility. Get up and say, "John Walsh is crazy. It has nothing to do, 28, with, uh, fire department pensions." 20, 29, this is reap. You do a good job on that. And, you know, when you do a good job, I say, "I'm not one of those people who say, 'You're all a bunch of crooks. I'm a white man, and you're all a bunch of crooks.'" I'm not that kind of white man. Number, although there are plenty of them here, 30, 32, this is, uh, Christian Science monument. I don't think we should be helping, uh, I, I don't want monuments to Christian Science. I want to separate church and state. And, uh, you're not going to talk about this, and you're, and you're going to vote in, in favor of it. Uh, okay, you're going to open some more winter shelters on nowhere in the, uh, I like how you keep it out of middle-class Jewish neighborhoods. As a Jew, I'm very happy. Let it stay in your neighborhood, blacks and Hispanics, the homeless shelters. Keep them out of Jewish neighborhoods, and that's what they're doing here. Foothill Boulevard. Okay, now, uh, my, uh, one minute, Measure S. Vote for Measure S. What does it do? It does something very simple. It stops construction of high-rise buildings for two years. And I just want to say to my friends, the Jews, if this doesn't pass, if this doesn't pass, they have a whole bunch of projects in your Jewish neighborhood because the black and Hispanic neighborhoods are full. It's time to get the Orthodox Jews. And I'm telling you right now, any Orthodox Jew who votes for, is in favor of this, this is the second time. Remember, the only reason I exist is that my Jewish Hungarian father got his Jew ass out of Hungary and left the rest of them to end up in the concentration camps. And if you want your neighborhood destroyed, vote no on S, but if you want it, vote yes on S.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay, let's go ahead, members. Let's go ahead and vote on the following items. Item 1, items 22 through 31, and item 34. Let's open the row. Close the row. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Let those items pass. Okay, we're going to move on to item number 2. And we have one speaker, Ivana Michelle Autry. She here?
Yes, I'd like to support my colleague, Antonia. Uh, and first, in exposing the fact that you refuse to depict us on one of your television screens, uh, and I'd also like to expose one of the, uh, the council Sedios', um, uh, I guess, one of his employees, a member of the-
Ms. Autry, you're speaking on item number 2.
I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Well, I'm relative to the alcohol. I'm not speaking against CVS, but I think that there is sufficient, uh, there's sufficient alcohol dispensaries or licensed alcohol dispensaries. Uh, I, do I get, I get two or three minutes, but I'm speaking on public comment as well.
You're going to get your minute after you're done with item 2.
Okay, so this is strictly, I just, I'm not speaking against CVS, but I just, I don't drink at all. So, I'm just, I think that there is enough alcohol circulating downtown contributing to unruly or unlawful behavior, and I, I think that, like I said, there are sufficient alcohol licensed dispensaries downtown. And so, that's my comment.
Now, Ms. Autry, you have one minute of general public comment.
Uh, okay, again, in terms of general public commentary, I'd like to expose one of the American Society of Civil Engineers, who was really very rude to me. He's one of the employees, or one of the, I guess, one of the employees of, um, Councilmember Sedio. Uh, he was, uh, really very disrespectful. That's it firstly, an exposition also of this TV screen that was not depicting us in this row. We're, we have a right to not only express ourselves, but we have a right also to the visual exposition as well. Uh, I'd also like to take this time to support Antonia, um, who is strong in her comments against, uh, Mexican or Hispanic, uh, members of our community. And I'm not a racist. She's a Latina, okay? I'm an African-American, and I have many Hispanic friends, but my maintenance men sexually harass, uh, black women, single petite women, and, um, I, I don't see any law enforcement really taking action against that maintenance of the status quo.
Thank you. Your time is up. Okay, that concludes cards on items number 2. Let's go ahead and open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, let's also close general public comment because we don't have any more cards on general public comment as well. Let's move on to item 33. Mr. Mr. Harris Dawson. Item 33.
And Madam President, I'm sorry if I may, 33A has been circulated and is now before council for consideration.
Excellent. This is a technical amendment to this matter that we've submitted. Thank you.
We have one card on item 33 and job.
My name is Ann, my name is Ann Jobe, and I'm on the Silmar Homelessness Liaison with Dunn and a member of the Silmar Committee on, uh, homelessness. I'm here to thank Councilmember Harris Dawson and Wezar for bringing this to the floor and urge the rest of you to pass it. We in Silmar have been very concerned that over, that our most vulnerable neighbors would not have shelter after February the 28th. In fact, the Silmar Neighborhood Council wrote letters to President Wesson, AKA CD 7 Caretaker, and, and Councilmember Harris Dawson and others about this very thing. And I'm just thrilled that- And I'm just thrilled that it is going forward with your good help. I want you to know that the Board of Supervisors yesterday... Check out the Daily News, you'll be able to read about what they did yesterday that is in keeping with what you're doing today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am, for coming down. Mr. Kerkorian?
Very much, Madam President. I just wanna complete Ann Jobe's thought. What the County Board of Supervisors did yesterday was call upon, or at least council supervisor Kuhl and supervisor Barker called for opening the Silmar Armory year-round as a homeless shelter. And I just note that with the technical amendment removing the Pacoima location from this list, the Silmar Armory is the only winter shelter in the entire San Fernando Valley. A population of 2 million people, one of the highest rates of increase of homeless population anywhere in the county of Los Angeles, and there's one winter shelter that's operating right now. So I urge that we go forward with this motion. I wanna thank Mr. Harris Dawson for bringing it. But I also wanna point out the critical need to have more winter shelter space and more shelter space generally serving the San Fernando Valley because Ann Jobe and others recognize that if we don't have shelter space, shelter takes place in our parks, in our neighborhoods, in our libraries, and so on. So not only is this the humane thing to do for our homeless population, it's the best thing to do for our neighborhoods and communities throughout the city of Los Angeles, not just in certain places, every place in the city. Ask for your eye vote.
That concludes speakers on item thirty-three. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
The item passed. Let's move on to special one. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Since the posting of the agenda on February seventeenth, fourteen-year-old Elias Rodriguez went missing, there's an immediate need to attempt to find the child, and to that end, an offer of reward has been, is before the council. The council must make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 and then vote on the substance of the motion.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the findings. Let's open the row. Close the row. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Mr. Wesson?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President and members. Shhh. In nineteen eighty-seven, when I worked in this building, I got a frantic phone call from my wife indicating that my youngest son, who was a kindergarten student, had disappeared. And I cannot articulate to you the panic. I remember rushing, doing over a hundred miles an hour on the ten freeway to get to his school. Apparently, the person that was supposed to come pick him up was a minute or two late, and he took it on his own to walk to that person's house. Anyway, the school fixed that, and that never happened again. But for that forty minutes, that I did not know where my child was, it had to be the most pain that I have ever gone through in my entire life. I can envision a mother or father that has had to worry about this for several days. This past Friday, young Mr. Rodriguez, who is only fourteen years old, was on his way home from Caesar Chavez Learning Academy located at 1001 Aurora Avenue in San Fernando. It was raining unbelievably hard, and he didn't have a ride. He walked home, and that's the last time that he was seen. He was wearing a black baseball cap, black sweatpants, gray sweatshirt with Lakeview writing on it. This child was not known as a troubled child, was a good young man who had never run away from home. He was only five foot four, 100 pounds, soaking wet, brown hair, brown eyes, and a young Latino If you have any information, we ask that you call. The family contact is Yucenia Vega, who is Elias's cousin, and she can be reached at Also, contact Lieutenant Kathleen Burns, who is at the LAPD Mission Division at 818-838-9800. You all know that his poor mother, Ms. Moscotto, I believe is how you pronounce it, is going out of her mind. I really want to thank Council District Four and Mr. Rue's staff because they are the first people that brought this to our attention. So I'm asking for every mom and dad and grandparent and aunt and uncle and young parent to just imagine how this would feel, and let us really be on the lookout. Let us look as we drive down the streets, as we walk down the streets, as we go to and from stores, as we're going into schools, and let us try to have a happy reunion with this young man and his family. We are offering this reward, one that we hope we never have to pay out. Because if we do, that would mean that some harm has come to Mr. Young Rodriguez. So I am asking everybody to look on the screen. If you think you saw something, say something. So with that said, members, I ask for an eye vote, and I ask Angelenos throughout this great city to be on the lookout for young Elias Rodriguez. Fourteen years old, 100 pounds, five foot four.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. I believe there was technical difficulties with the kiosk in the back, so this item was not posted, so I believe there was a delay, Mr. Walsh. Did you fill out a card, or would you like to speak on this item, sir?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. As far as rewards are concerned, I've been asking now for three years for a scorecard. How many outstanding rewards, including this one? How much money? And how much have you paid out? You never talk, and the LA Times doesn't give a damn because the mayor flirts with Zahnheiser and he doesn't write a story. I'm telling you right now, as far as this missing child is concerned, we've now reached the rock bottom. The city council is now Missing Persons, Missing Persons Bureau. Why is it a Missing Persons Bureau? Because you don't have anybody. This city is out of control. No Olympics here till you find this child.
Mr. Previn?
It is Eric Previn from CD2, and I am running for the office of Mayor of Los Angeles. This is a horrifying story, obviously. I am so worried about this child because the rains and all the rushing water, I mean, one can only imagine, and I certainly hope that this message gets out and we can find this boy. And a reward may be helpful, and I appreciate that that's been put in place. The way the city takes out classified advertising for rewards is through the Los Angeles Times, and I briefly glanced recently, and it is an astonishing amount of money. In the last year, we spent over almost $400,000 with the LA Times alone just buying these kinds of ads. I would request going forward that we advertise at the smallest possible way through the paper, because nobody reads the classifieds at the LA Times, and instead give the money to the victims, if there are victims in these cases. We have to get the word out. The local media, the local news have been very, very helpful, obviously KTLA, KCAL, all those outlets do a great job.
Thank you, sir.
And we wanna-
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Your minute is up. Anyone else? Because I know we had technical difficulties in the back with the kiosk. I see no other speakers. Let's go ahead and open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Madam President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Members, are there any announcements? Mr. Buscayino?
Colleagues, Council District Fifteen is losing a family member, Sarah Bonner. After representing us and working hard for the last over three years now, Sarah. Sarah was tasked with managing my calendar, and as you know, colleagues, managing calendars is not an easy task, trying to balance our family lives with constituent work and meetings and council meetings and committee meetings, aside from all the other things that we do. But Sarah, I would just wanna personally share with you my appreciation, our deepest appreciation, on behalf of our entire team and the residents of Council District Fifteen. Sarah is just beloved everywhere we went. I was either from the field deputy level to senior staff to staff here at City Hall. Really worked, loved working with you, and you, Sarah, has been really responsive. She's gonna move on to SCIU.
Healthcare workers.
Healthcare workers. And will take on a leadership role there. But thank you. I just wanna recognize Sarah and give her a round of applause for her dedicated service to our city and to the entire Council District Fifteen family. Thank you, Madam President.
Members, are there any other announcements? If you're gonna ask for everyone to please stand for adjourned motions? Any adjourned motions, members? Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and members. I ask that the council adjourn in the memory of Mr. Robert Clarence Shackelford. Mr. Shackelford was born in Alabama but moved here at the age of three, attended 116th Street Elementary School, Gompers High School, Gompers Junior High School, and Locke High School, and then LA Trade Tech where he got a degree in electrical engineering. He spent a long career working for Teledyne Technologies, McDonnell Douglas Aircraft, and eventually Boeing where he retired several years ago. Mr. Shackelford was an inventor by nature, came up with several new ideas, including a mobile coffee table and an automatic photo reel to show pictures on, so much so that his neighbors and family referred to him as Inspector Gadget. Mr. Shackelford passed away on January first of this year. Mr. Shackelford is the father of Renee Shackelford, who is a stalwart staff member with the Department of Sanitation, knows every neighborhood council and block club and church and community organization in the Eighth District, and the entire community is joining with her in mourning the loss of her father.
Any other adjourned motions? Mr. Kerkorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Members, I'd ask that the council adjourn this meeting in memory of Davis Dutton, who for nearly half a century anchored North Hollywood's iconic and always cluttered independent bookstore, Dutton's Books. He was seventy-nine and passed away from Parkinson's disease. Mr. Dutton was an editor, author, and incredibly successful bookstore owner who started in the business in 1961 with just a handful of books in a former liquor store on Laurel Canyon Boulevard, and he grew that store to a place, a literary center for the San Fernando Valley, and eventually opened a second store in Burbank, and his brother opened another Dutton's in Brentwood, actually. So they had great success in bringing literature to the people of the San Fernando Valley and beyond. Mr. Dutton's oldest memories, he told the Daily News, were when his mom, Thelma, would take him to the North Hollywood Library where she attended a great books society called the Delphian Society way back when in the valley. And it was there at the North Hollywood Library where he met his wife Judy when he tried to turn in an overdue book and avoid the fine, and Judy caught his eye, and the rest was history. Mr. Dutton was an editor of Westways Magazine, Colorado Magazine, and a published author. The loss of Dutton's was a great loss to the San Fernando Valley, one of the last independent bookstores in the entire San Fernando Valley, but it was a great legacy that he left for a half a century, and Mr. Dutton and his service to the San Fernando Valley will long be remembered. He's survived by his wife Judy, his son Dirk, and his daughter Juliette, and many, many people who love books throughout the San Fernando Valley. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Kerkorian. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned.